Good afternoon. Good afternoon and welcome. This is Marion City Council Work Session for Tuesday, January 7th, 2020. Our first meeting of the year. Welcome, everyone. First thing marked on our agenda is a presentation. Our annual visit from our friend Kay at NTS. Are you ready?
I am ready.
Well, good evening, Mayor and Council members, and Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
I just said to a couple of you that I could almost make a recording of this because I say the same thing every year. I hope you don't get tired of what I have to say. So, talking about growth and progress over the last year, in your package you're going to have some of the figures that I'm talking about, and I just give you that so if you want to look at it in the future, you can refer back to it. We had a good year last year at NTS. Almost forty-five thousand five hundred rides. And that's to work in school. This is our total ridership, not a course to Marion, but it is our total ridership. So you can see that we are out there in the communities and getting people to and from work, which is really important because that's kind of the economic driver, is getting people to work and making businesses successful, keeping people off of welfare, off the streets, and et cetera. So, we're happy to be able to do that. We also work with a lot of the nonprofits in the community, partner with them. Probably one of the largest ones that we work with is Young Parents Network. You're probably familiar with what they do. They take care of young parents that probably are too young to have very good parenting skills. We transport them back and forth to classes on a regular basis so that it enhances their lives so that they are able to make good choices as they raise their children. We work with the Brain Injury Group as well. These are people who have severe brain injuries that often keep them from being able to navigate properly in the community. For a number of years, the enrollment fell off for the meetings that they were having. And after they investigated to find out why people weren't coming, it was because they didn't have transportation. So we've been able to fill that gap and get these people to and from their appointments and to their meetings. So they have a better quality of life. Some of it is social, some of it is learning experiences. So, these are things that are probably feel-good things, but we feel that's important to not only do things that have to do with our work society, but as well in the nonprofit sector. Special projects. We're always working on special projects. One of the things that we're working on right now, and will be continuing to work on throughout the winter months, is getting transportation for our homeless population. And we do that throughout Marion, Hiawatha, and Cedar Rapids. And this is a really rewarding experience because these are people that we're taking to the shelter, and they would not, they would probably be on the street or someplace that wouldn't be very pleasant if we didn't take them to the shelter. It's a challenging ride for us to provide because almost always people have all the possessions that they own with them. So often, you'll have to try to navigate a grocery cart onto the buses. And there are a number of people who have disabilities, too. So we always have to make sure that we have something available that will accommodate those individuals as well. It's a sad type of work to do, but it's also very rewarding because we're able to make a better quality of life for just a little while for these people. Our summer meal program that we do, this is something that we do here in Marion, too. We serve a couple of locations. And we served about thirty-five thousand meals to kids in the community last year. We took our buses and vans and used those to transport the food to and from our location at Horizons to the sites where the kids are at. Now, these are kids that are on the free and reduced lunch program at school. And so when the summer comes along, that particular perk goes away. And quite often, they simply don't have any nutrition during the daily hours. So this is one of our other little pet projects that we do. It is very time-consuming. It takes a lot of volunteers, but it's well worth it just because it's the right thing to do. We have a waiting list. I say that, like I said, this sounds like last year, I said we had a waiting list from 2:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m. That never ends. That's where the largest part of our funding is inadequate, is that 2:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m. service. The large part of our funding that comes from Cedar Rapids only is allocated for up to 2:00 a.m. So after that, we use that, whatever money we can get our hands on, which is what I go out and try to maintain some kind of a donor base so we can get donations to support that particular time of night. For any of you that doubt that there's people working at that time of night, I would like to have you remember that you will have people in hospitals, nursing homes, care centers. You have your janitorial people who are cleaning buildings that time of night. You have night watchmen that are out on duty at that time of night. Restaurants that support our community in the evening hours. And large cafeterias like Kirkwood, Rockwell, a number of larger businesses that have cafeterias that people come in at that time of night to start working. So we do have a rather large population at that time of night that we serve. I'm continuing to work on legislative projects. Some of them are more indirectly, not directly tied to transportation, but transportation is always one of the things that I work on and try to make sure, not only on a local level, and when I say local, I mean in Des Moines, but on a federal level. I have the opportunity to go to DC a couple times a year and do some lobbying in there, which has become very interesting and it does have its rewards. We actually have a, it's kind of funny because a small, little organization like NTS, RFTA, is actually asks about NTS when they're to lobby. And I find that just fascinating because they talk about the fact that what we do is very unique because only large cities have 24-hour transportation service. And for a small community, and we are small, it comes right down to it, Cedar Rapids, Hiawatha, and Marion, is a small metropolitan area compared to other parts of the country. And for us to have that kind of service, 24-hour service a day for transportation, it's very unique, we find out. They also compliment Iowa on being so considerate when we're asking for funding. They say that most states are, they want money for urban, or they want money for rural. And they are at odds with each other, and they don't, they don't work well together. They say Iowa thinks everybody should have transportation. They think everybody has a right to get where they should go. So that makes you feel good when you hear that kind of feedback and you know you're doing the right thing. I'm always looking for sponsorships. I met with the Lion Energy this morning, and I think have secured some sponsorships for some vehicles that we're needing to replace. Our vehicles get a life expectancy on them of the most ridiculous amount of miles you've ever imagined. Some of our newer vehicles have about two-hundred-and-thirty thousand miles on them, as our new ones. When they become old, they're over five-hundred thousand. And we're talking about a van that you see driving around Marion or Cedar Rapids. And you'll think, well, that doesn't look bad. It's all nice and clean and shiny. Well, that's because we maintain them well. But the thing that wears out the most quickly are those vans, are the doors, because they're zipped back and forth how many times a night. So, funding for the, not only the service, but funding for the vehicles is also a challenge as well. I do want to point out and make sure that you know that the monies that we receive from Marion for transportation is used directly for transportation. We don't use that for the buses or for maintenance or anything else. It's directly toward the transportation for your city. Now, you should have another page in your packet that shows the businesses that we serve here in Marion. And the ones that are highlighted are all new ones from last year. They're places that we've picked up in the last year. So, we feel good about that, and I think you guys should, too. There's several on there I'm not familiar with, but, you know, there's new places coming in all the time, and so we're really blessed to be able to take care of them as well. Now, we come to that dreaded last sheet that talks about money. And I will put this, I had said I wasn't going to put this up, but I think I will, just so the audience is able to see this as well. You can see the ridership to and from Marion, and Marion, the incoming traffic that we bring in, and what we pick up here and take out to other cities, meaning Hiawatha and Cedar Rapids. So your total rides for the last year are about eighty-six hundred rides, which is about average, about what we usually do for you folks. It stayed pretty steady. So the eighty-six thousand riders that we have, if you take the cost per ride for us is twenty-one dollars and forty-one cents. Let me remind you again how that's calculated. That is the, all of our overhead, meaning the benefits, all the benefits that our drivers have, all the benefits that anybody that works for NTS has, our gasoline, our wages, anything that has to do with overhead. And then you take that and divide it by the number of riders that you've served in the last year, and that's how you get your cost per ride. I think that's kind of an interesting way to evaluate that. So, it cost us one hundred and eighty-two thousand one hundred and twenty-one dollars last year to provide those eighty-six hundred rides. We charge six dollars a ride. So you take those rides times the six dollars, and that's the revenue that we have gotten from our riders. You take the number of, the amount of money that we spent over the last year, deduct the revenue, and that hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand six hundred and sixty-three dollars is what we come up short. That's the money that we have to go out and look forward to be able to continue the service. And that's when we come to you folks and ask you to help us out in that funding. I've asked for a 5% increase in the past, and that's exactly what I've asked for again this year. If you're able to look at your budget and see if you could find a way to support us again in the coming year, we'd appreciate that a great deal. We do enjoy our affiliation with Marion a great deal. We are looking forward to continuing that service in the future. And we also would like to be able to look at some of your wonderful new things that you're doing here in the city and see if there's a way that we can help you out with that. I know Prairie Meadows is going to be a huge raging success. It already is, it's not going to be, it already is. And there may be ways that our transportation entity can help you in that capacity as well. So I would like to have you think of that in your future planning and see if there's a way that we'd be able to help you out in the coming future for that. So, questions?
Thank you. Questions for Kay? Okay, well, it's always good to have you here to remind us of all the great things that Horizons and NTS do in the community, in the metro area, and the great services you provide. So thank you.
It's a pleasure to do the kind of work that we do. It was very satisfying. So thank you very much. We appreciate your consideration.
Okay, we have a short agenda this week. And there are a couple items marked for discussion by the staff. We'll just go page by page if there's anything that is not marked that people, anyone would like to discuss individually. Anything on page one? Or items three through five on page two?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am?
Yeah, for number five, near the top of the page, I just wanted to make a comment. I think we did it so that two of these closed sessions follow meetings that we're already here for. I personally really like that. I didn't know how anyone else felt about possibly trying to schedule those types of closed sessions piggybacking meetings when we're here anyway, but I just wanted to comment while we were together and see if that was a consensus thing, or if anyone cared.
Anyone have any thoughts on that?
I would, I'm with Renee. It would be helpful if it was the same night we were here for these meetings, too. So, that's what you're suggesting, Renee?
Yeah, I mean, and we don't necessarily have to change these if these work for everyone, but I just think going forward when we have to schedule meetings, closed session types of meetings or special meetings, if we can piggyback it onto a time that we're coming into City Hall, it's helpful.
I think they generally have been, maybe we've had a few in the past that weren't, but, okay. All right, we'll move on to number six. This is under Administrative Services.
We are, have written a, I'm sorry, I can't say, I wrote it. Tracy is with CJ Cooper. They are drug, third-party administration for the drug and alcohol that we already do for the CDL, DOT testing that we have to do. And recently, it was discovered that for something that happened earlier this year, we didn't have even a reasonable suspicion for citywide, which led us to write this drug and alcohol policy for, to cover more than just the people who have CDLs in the organization. And we are just really looking for your guidance on what level do you want us to do any kind of random drug screening? At this point, all CDL and DOT is part of this policy. We just combine them together, so that will remain the same. And we originally started out as safety-sensitive, so that would include, you know, your firefighters, your police officers, even your building inspectors, lifeguards, those kind of positions. And then, that kind of morphed into a conversation that maybe it should be just citywide, and it should include your HR or city manager, those kind of positions, too. So, it is not the norm. I reached out to, it looks like you have a question.
Well, the acronyms you're using, CDL, just for everyone's purposes, would you just?
Yeah, sorry. So, for heavy equipment, you're heavy equipment operators. So, like, anyone driving large vehicles have to have a CDL. And so that is the government, state practice to have them tested. So that's not something that we have to...
Commercial driver's license?
Yes, yes, sorry. Commercial driver.
You find it, yeah.
Yes, yeah. Sorry, my bad. So, yes, so that is all already covered, that we're continuing with that. And we are just wondering at what point do you want us to move forward with doing any kind of random drug screening? Because of an incident that happened, again, earlier this year with, at the police department, when we suspected that there might be usage, we weren't able to test that person because it wasn't covered on the policy. So we started writing it specifically for reasonable suspicion, which means anytime you see somebody or have, you know, an idea that maybe they're using, we can then test them. Previously, we could not. So now we are, that is like the basis and what we would propose to move forward with. And then at this point, it's determining whether or not you want us to do random drug screenings in the same manner as the CDL, DOT, you know, Department of Transportation, right? And so, again, so safety-sensitive or even citywide. And I don't know where you guys, that's where we're really, we're looking for guidance. And if you have any questions about it, I made sure Tracy was here with me so that she could, you know, really give you details on how that's all implemented.
Questions?
Yes, go ahead. Well, my comment is that I'm surprised we did not have reasonable suspicion, or in the case of an accident, that you can test that person in that manner. So, and I understand the random testing as required for the groups that are already defined. I like the policy extending to all of the employees, probably except for the random testing. I don't see that, again, my personal opinion, again, where I worked before, again, we did not do that. We had all the other measures that you're talking about, company-wide, and did implement those a few times. I think those are absolutely necessary. The only one I would probably back off on for the, all the rest of the employees would just be the random testing. I just don't see a purpose or necessarily benefit to that.
Sure.
Well, I'm sorry.
Did you mean safety-sensitive or just, that would not do random?
Safety-sensitive, please. I mean, yeah, that's already in place.
No, it's not.
Oh, random testing?
No, random testing is only for the CDL drivers right now, current policy. So the policy, the way we have it written that's provided to you today is for citywide, but we could back down to safety-sensitive or back down to what it originally was, where it's just CDL. So that's where we're looking.
Oh, I see. Okay, I did not catch that. So my comment would be, I'd probably extend it to safety-sensitive, not to the remainder of the employees.
Okay.
Or random testing. So that would be my comment.
Okay. Councilmember Brandt?
Yeah, I was just going to say I agree with Steve exactly. That would be exactly what I would say, so.
Okay. Councilmember Gudelo?
You, I just wanted for you to follow up on a comment you started to make about this is not the norm.
Yeah, oh, yeah, sorry.
For moving towards, so could you finish that?
Yep. So I, Lon said that he had had conversations with you guys, and he was just wanting to know what do other cities, what do other employers do? Private sector is, you know, always a little ahead of the game, and they will do this kind of testing for all employees. I reached out to all the different cities, HR departments for all the cities and counties. Overwhelmingly got a response from like forty different HR departments across the state, and none of them do any kind of random testing for safety-sensitive or citywide. They all do reasonable suspicion, and that's CDL requirements that we have to do. So that was where I was just wanting to let you guys know. But also, things are changing, you know, with the new, being so close to Illinois and the new, you know, drug laws that are changing, you know, they might also change as well. So that's just a thought.
Thank you. And then, so my next question is, if we change it to include safety-sensitive positions, what's the cost? You know, how frequently would we do this random testing, and what's the cost associated?
Yep. So, and it's actually not a huge difference whether we do safety-sensitive and the citywide. It doesn't, it's not a huge impact. I think I roughly estimated about a thousand dollars. We're going to do...
A thousand dollars a year?
Yeah, a year, yes, sorry. A thousand dollars a year for all of them, because it is a percentage. Like, so we were, fifteen percent of the pool for CDL is tested, but when you do CDL, we're a part of a larger pool with other employers. So it's not actually fifteen percent of our employees. And so we roughly found out it was about eight to ten people a year. So it's minimal cost to do that, so.
And then I think my last question is, what are the safety-sensitive positions that aren't already covered, that aren't associated with CDL?
Yep. So that's all, anyone, fire, in the fire department, police department, building inspectors, and then your parks, with your seasonal wrecks, that, you know, your swimming aids.
So that's not currently covered, those positions under the policy? Okay. I also just went away, and I'm totally against a blanket policy of random drug testing, but the safety-sensitive seems to make sense, and it's certainly cheap enough. Thanks.
Okay. Councilmember Sternert?
Just, I guess my two cents on this, this is just my personal opinion, because this is my area of expertise on a daily basis. But the city does assume some responsibility under the hired and non-owned auto coverage. So even as staff or employees are in their personal vehicles and they're involved in automobile accident, if they were en route to a business venture under the city's umbrella, that will be called back in judgment. So my preference would be to make this a blanket for all employees across the board with no segregation or discrimination on that for that reason. But hired and non-owned auto coverage, when we use this type and program for people in their personal auto vehicles, are a liability that is extended to them as well, too. So, all staff members occasionally do jump into private passenger vehicles that we're using. It doesn't have to be heavy equipment, or light, or heavy industrial use, or commercial, or CDL ratings. So I think that should be a factor that we should consider. And so from my perspective, I would like to make it a blanket across city policy for all employees. Thanks.
Yes?
I just want a little clarification to make sure I understand. We're talking about two, three different groups of people, right? Folks that have a CDL, safety-sensitive, and all employees?
Yes.
And different ways of doing drug testing, right? Either random, or when there's reasonable suspicion?
Yep.
Is that right?
So, yeah, I'll start...
We need to decide here what groups of people are included, and what type of drug testing we would want those groups to have. Is that accurate?
Yes. So, and just, so as of right now, we're proposing, and we've, you know, the leadership team, everybody's talked about it. We worked with CJ Cooper, and the police chief, fire chief, even the unions. So we're, everybody is 100% supportive on whatever you decide. We just wanted to just have you do the final say on whether or not it's the whole coverage. So, right now, it is reasonable suspicion across the board. Everybody will be under that. So if you're in a car accident, we can test you. Doesn't matter, you know, anything. So that is, we're proposing, and we really want, obviously want that to be the thing. And then the CDL, DOT, which we have to, that is, we cannot change that. So those are the two basic that we're hoping to move forward. Then this decision is, do you want us to do random drug screening for safety-sensitive or random drug screening for everybody? So it's really kind of that decision on the main point of, is it safety-sensitive or is it citywide? Or none at all? I mean, we don't have to do random screening for safety-sensitive either. That's, and they would still be covered under the reasonable suspicion.
All employees are covered right now with reasonable suspicion?
Not, they will with this policy.
The policy.
Yes.
That's what the policy says.
So that was, that was the catalyst of starting this. And then it came to, well, maybe we should do reasonable suspicion. And then that, once we got in there, the conversation started being had with CJ Cooper and even the union. They were saying, why are we held to a different standard and not, you know, city manager or HR, things like that? So kind of, that's where it got to that point of where do you guys want to see this go?
So the, I'm sorry.
Just to, I wanted to clarify a question. So I would be at the place where comfortable with all employees for the reasonable suspicion and not random.
Not random at all.
Yes, that's where I would be.
Who do you want for random? Anybody?
I think if I understand, do the...
CDL has to.
CDL has to have that. But everybody else would be under the reasonable suspicion, all city employees.
As I understand it, at least three others agree with that position, right? And why, I would like to know why. Like, I'd like to know the reasoning.
For random?
I'm not random.
I'm against random.
Right.
Reasonable suspicion.
So I think there are four, four of you that have said you're against blanket random testing, and I just, is there any...
Not blanket random.
You're against that?
Against it.
Oh, against it?
Yeah.
I just don't feel it has, if I were to lean one direction or the other, I would lean away from random testing.
Because? Or are you willing to share that?
Yeah, well, yeah. Well, again, I haven't put a huge amount of thought into it, but my experience is those positions that have to be tested up front will be tested as required by the rules and the laws. The reasonable suspicion, to me, is the biggest change that is being made here, which benefits those situations where there is an incident or an accident, that it should be tested. Beyond that, I'm not sure I see that huge of a benefit until we deem there is a problem on random testing. So I would go as far, if I picked any group, I would say safety-sensitive, only from the standpoint of how the public would view that. And if I were to even glean that down further, and if I were to chop that down even further, I'd pick on the police and the fire department, simply because, you know, I think the citizens absolutely expect them to be clean all of the time. So, but from the standpoint of the other people that are driving company vehicle or city vehicles, or something like that, the majority of the time, if there's a reason for anything to be done, it's going to be done under reasonable suspicion rules. And I think that, to me, is the most important. So if I were to back off anywhere, I'd back off the other direction, not put it on the entire city.
Anyone else care to share their reasoning, or?
I would just say privacy, personal privacy, privacy. Not that I'm condoning drug use, but I don't think it's personal privacy. Yeah. Kind of government overreach.
So, but the decision for Thursday is, doesn't deal with the blanket... So, but the decision for Thursday is, doesn't deal with the blanket random testing? It's just.
Well, it's in here.
Yeah.
It's in here now. You're saying you want to know what direction we want to go?
I, so do you want to do random, do you want to do random screening? And if so, safety sensitive or citywide? Everything, the reasonable suspicion is going, is a decision that we're, we're assuming you're going to approve and, and would prefer to have in the thing going forward. So reasonable suspicion is going and then we just want to know, do you want us to do random screening? And if so, is it safety sensitive or is it citywide?
You have a recommendation?
Or neither.
Do you have a personal recommendation as our expert here?
I.
Who's our expert?
Based on my, I, so.
Professional that we're.
It'll be completely different than CJ Cooper. CJ Cooper is recommending citywide. Based on my experience with HR and, and like what Steve was saying, I would say it's not the norm. And I, and it is, I have yet to see where it's the benefit of it, but again, that's my HR experience of it, so.
Yes, go ahead.
Are there any concerns with safety sensitive testing, random testing with union contracts that we have in place?
Nope, and we actually worked, that was why we had them involved in this from the very beginning. We, we negotiated with them, it kind, we kind of came to an impasse and then finally just started working together. So we had, it kind of was a really good working relationship on that, so they're prepared either way. But, you know, obviously, they would prefer not to tend to have that one way or not. But I really feel like what led to this was, could have been just, had we had a reasonable suspicion covered for everybody, we wouldn't have gotten this far. And so taking it to the level where it's random screening for citywide kind of seems a little extreme for maybe one case that we had that was questionable. So that's where I say about that.
As written, the policy gives the council the most options really to choose from. I mean, we're absolutely recommending that we have the post-accident and the reasonable suspicion apply to everyone. So the really, the question is, to the mayor's earlier point, is if we are going to do random, we have to do it for CDL, do you want to apply random to anybody else? And if so, what group or what groups?
And that option is written in the policy we're voting on on Thursday?
So the, as of the way the policy is written, it is, we went to the full extent, is it, it is everybody. And then that way, it'll be easy to take that, the pieces out.
I see, so.
If that's the case. So if we do all, and, and it would be very easy to change it, instead of citywide to be safety sensitive, we could edit it appropriately, but we, we worked with both units and everybody. So everybody was, worst-case scenario, we came, everybody was gonna be, we all knew what to expect if that's what you decided. And then at that point, it's easy to, to edit it back.
So how is that decision gonna be conveyed? I mean, this resolution is to approve the policy as it's written. Is there another resolution or another motion or something or?
How should we?
You would do a motion to amend the policy to strike out any language? Because I think we have a, if I remember right, there's a table in here that defines the different positions. You'd remove those and then do the resolution to approve the amended policy.
So will, will everyone be ready to vote on that on Thursday or is that something that you?
I, I won't be here on Thursday, but I'd love to know what your thoughts are on it.
I'm still, still trying to figure it out, so, yeah.
Yeah, so I won't be here Thursday, and obviously, I'm just one person, but I am yes to the random for the sensitive positions, which I think is one more bump. And then obviously, yes to reasonable suspicion, but no to the blanket citywide.
And I will work with Rachel to make sure that it's appropriate, or we figure out how to make that so it's easy for you, the resolution. And worst-case scenario, now if we know this is how you're leading, we can always come back and resubmit the final policy to you to be approved at, at that case, too.
So there will be another motion on the?
Let them answer that question.
Agenda or how's that gonna work?
You think it's, is it written appropriately for them to be able to make a vote on it?
Random testing or how it.
We can add language to the resolution for Thursday, so it says the policy to include random testing for citywide, and we can add another, or second resolution. I mean, it's, it sounds like it's consensus is for just safety sensitive, so.
That's not the consent, I'm not.
No, see, no, no, that's not true.
We can edit it, though.
Yeah.
Perfect, we'll edit, oh.
Yeah, let us talk about that. There's a couple of different ways that we could do it. One would be maybe to actually take the resolution off and do a motion directing staff to redraft the policy to apply to whatever positions you'd want it to cover. Then we could bring it back at the next meeting, the resolution for approval. So you wouldn't be amending something with unclear language.
Okay, go ahead.
Can we go back to your comment?
Sure.
About the survey you did with the other cities?
Yep.
That, so you're saying the majority of the other cities are not doing any random testing? Except for those that are required.
Exactly. So what I sent out to them was just three basic questions. Do you do say randoms for safety sensitive? Do you do randoms for citywide? And do you do reasonable suspicion for everybody? And everybody said no, no, yes. So no randoms, no randoms, yes to reasonable suspicion. The only thing that was, that I saw was different was Lynn County, they are, just recently, just this year, are doing random screenings for their sheriffs. But no, but no other cities or counties are doing it currently.
As a business, you know, again, when I, when I led a business, I agreed with those answers one hundred percent. No, no, and yes. And I think those were appropriate. As I sit here on the city side, I look at that a little bit differently because of the safety sensitive people. Now, I'm not sure lifeguards and all of that are quite as critical as police and fire, as residents would look at that. But I do look at the safety sensitive group a little bit differently in that respect. So I'm, again, I come from an environment with the no, no, yes, but here, I, I'm, right now leaning, I'll have to think about that till Thursday, leaning a little bit differently, just because of how.
And like I said, we've, we've all had the conversation. Everybody is prepared to go one way or another, we just need your final guidance.
And then, as I, I can say that in my profession, this is a topic that seems to be of high interest in the southern border of Wisconsin and the eastern border of Iowa right now. So I do think it's an emerging area of policy that you will probably see develop over the next six months to a year. I think we're just a little ahead of it.
Just some. One more question for now. With the reasonable suspicion, my assumption is that if a supervisor has a concern, they can request a drug test, is that right?
Yes, yep.
So.
And so we'll have, well, everybody will give, all supervisors and everybody will go through that kind of testing so that they're aware and stuff. Yep, training, sorry, training.
Not testing.
Yes, not testing. Basically tested in order, yeah.
It's okay, I want to make sure we're clear on that.
Training, sorry, yep, and so that we're, and, you know, go over the policy. And so there'll be different ways we handle that, too, going forward, so. But yes, that is, that is the case. So if they see any kind of issues, they'll know what, and they'll know what to watch for, too.
Thank you.
I'd just like to follow up because this, this one seems to be leveraged against the DOT, but where are we currently at on the recreational drug use? I mean, that, as, as the city manager alluded to, this is gonna become more of a topic. And I feel as if, though, we may be looking at this as a, where are we at today? Where are we gonna be a year from now and two years from now? This is all changing very rapidly, especially with the announcement of the state of Illinois. Recreational drug use, again, too, I'm gonna come back to the insurance side of things. You know, somebody's recreationally using drugs of an evening and there's, it's still in their bloodstream by eight o'clock the next morning and they jump into a city car and they're gonna go downtown Cedar Rapids for a meeting. Is this drug-free? Are we being completely independent from the DOT? I, I just feel like this is being slighted a little bit on the DOT side because we're leveraging it against a CDL license and not more of a complete drug-free environment for all employees. We all know everybody goes through a blood screening at the time of employment and I'm guessing there's none done after that. Times have changed and I think it's, I think it's bearing a lot of weight that we look ahead on this topic and not just where we're currently at today and how we did things a year ago because it's coming and this will be amended within a year, in my projection, if it's not done right today.
Yeah, absolutely, and that's, that's why we had CJ Cooper be a part of that. And she agrees with that mentality as well, so. So that's why we had, we wanted to be covered on, however you guys lean, we are prepared either way. And even if you decide not to do citywide, you know, we worked very hard on this policy together as a group. And so, you know, even if you scale it back a little bit, we're not throwing it away. Well, it'll be prepared to, if you change in a year, you know, so. And CJ Cooper, the one thing about it, too, is with random screenings, you know, I've heard from some of the other cities that their attorney wasn't, was against it because they, how could you argue that they're truly random screening stuff? But just so you know, we have it and it's in our policy that CJ Cooper will administer all of that. So they will be truly, it truly will be third, third party. You know, it's not gonna be, and I will help administer when it comes to, from them, but not, I will not be drawing or picking the names or anything like that, so. So, yeah, so we're ready, no matter how you guys decide.
Anything else? Okay, thank you. Are moving on to the rest of page two and three, nothing is marked, if there's anything in particular? Also, page four.
Mayor, I would just note on page four, under the regular agenda, it's not on there, but we are gonna be adding approval of a grant agreement for a Great Places grant for the Uptown Plaza project for Thursday. It's been through legal review, it's the standard state of Iowa contract, similar terms, just different project name to ones that we've approved in the past. But I had let the council know that we were approved for a hundred and fifty-five thousand from Great Places, so that grant agreement will be coming forward.
Okay, is that clear? Okay, we have one item marked at the top of page five, under engineering.
Yes, Your Honor, so this is just accepting the subdivision Glen Rock Farm Seventh. So it's west of Winslow on our very northerly boundary of the city of Marion. This one's just a little bit different. We did accept the paving two years ago and they had some minor punchless items that are finally done. And so now we're accepting the actual project.
Questions? Okay. That was the last item marked for discussion. If there's anything else on page five, anyone would like to discuss?
I have a question on.
Yes, sir. Mr. Brandt?
Where is it? Sorry, I gotta find it.
Is it the alley vacation?
Thank you. About knocking on the doors, so.
F-one, I believe.
F-one.
Oh. Yes, I was gonna ask that.
Okay, so we're setting the public hearing for the alley vacation for Twenty-seventh and Twenty-eighth Street, Eleventh and Twelfth Avenue. So my question is, said letters were sent out to everyone, postcards about if they're interested in purchasing the proper, the alleyway, and five came, didn't respond. So did someone go out and actually knock on the doors to see, hey, did you get this letter? Are you interested or?
So I did, Lon asked me about this and I, I thought, I thought we made, we tried to phone call, but apparently, it's not as easy anymore to just find people. So what we did this time was we sent a post, a letter with a self-addressed return envelope with, are you interested or are you not interested? And I can't believe it, but we only got, I think, six of the eleven, five of the eleven back. Like, people just didn't even send back. So that's, that's what we did this time to try and make contact. I will say that alley vacations and sales, these are, these are not small amount of time issues and the return is not very much, so we don't spend a lot of time. We, we kind of, if someone comes in and wants this to happen, we, we kind of make them the person responsible for kind of coordinating the activity. I mean, legal spends a ton of time developing the notices, so it is a big commitment of time. So we kind of rely on that person who wants it to kind of coordinate that activity. So we don't, we don't go out and knock on doors and, you know, if we have the ability to make contact, we try, but it's, it's, you know.
Is, is it something that maybe in the future, kind of like when we changed with stuff going to TAC where we needed a petition of twenty people or whatever, where if there's an alley vacation, maybe and one person can't initiate it, maybe they need to get a petition of half the people that, you know, the alleys up here, or whatever. Potentially, so that it's not just.
Most, most of the time, we get a better, there's a better response, I'll be honest. Normally, there's a little better response in this, but we don't have any like real internal policy on how we do it. I don't, was there, was there concerns or issues on that or did you hear?
My only questioning was because if, if I was one of those property owners and, let's say, it got lost in the mail and it didn't get to me and I had no idea, no one ever said anything to me about it and then all of a sudden they sell to the, to my neighbor behind me and.
Well, there's more to it than that. I mean, because we, we notify for P and Z as well. So they receive, I believe, they will get two notices and then we did the third notice with the postcard, so I don't.
Do they get a notice for the hearing?
For the hearings. So we do, because we do a public hearing at both Planning Commission and City Council.
And the extra postcard that you did with the?
And actually, we do, they usually get it, well, they would get it for the vacation at City Council, at Planning Commission, City Council, and then for the sale.
So they would've got five mailings.
Well, they would've got one, two.
Total.
Three or four, three or four. Because we don't, the sale doesn't go to P and Z.
Okay, then this is my question, because if they're getting, getting that many notifications, then.
And then there's also signs posted, you know, see the signs next door for the other back. So there's signs that are posted, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else? Thank you. Thursday, we have our oath ceremony at the beginning of the, of the meeting.
And reception, too, before.
Yes, and the reception prior to, so. Okay, we'll see everyone on Thursday.